On next mission to order on July 18th, 2024. Looks like seven of that. Stuart, do your roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Chris Crawley here. Ed King. Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
John Cost. Is online. Vivian Diggs. Garfield Parker.
Here.
Alan Garland.
Here.
Roger McKinley.
Here.
Charles Williams.
Here.
Hadi Wilkins Corey.
Here.
We do have a call.
All right, thank you. If you would stand, please, for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Implication. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for another opportunity to try to get it right. We thank you for guiding us directly out there. That's each and every family and household representative here today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle, liberty and justice for all. Good seeing everyone. Mr. Cost, I know you're online. And I'd like to start my first thanking for the work that you've done and all the paperwork that you've sent me. Very interesting reading. So thank you very much for all that effort. Okay. You have an agenda before you. We will ask now for an approval of the agenda.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. And now we'll go to the approval of the minutes for June 20th, 2024. Hope you've had a chance to.
Are they be accepted as written?
Seconds.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. And now we'll go to the any commissioners with a comment. Comment.
This is John, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, great. I wasn't sure how this Zoom works on a phone, so I'm glad you could hear me. I don't know what I need to do to participate properly here, whether my voice can just stay open or I know you probably don't want it because it would talk to you. But anyway, I'm here and thank you for the kind words, Mr. Parker.
Right, thank you, I really enjoyed it. I knew the information, some kind of information was there. So we'll get to that in just a bit. Hadi, anything?
No.
Okay. I don't know. Okay, Charles, anything?
Nothing, no.
All right, go. Mr. Mackenzie, anything? Any comments?
No, it's just that we're moving along hopefully with this comprehensive plan. And I've been applying for grants for the litter committee, a bunch of other stuff. Things haven't seemed to be going well.
Are you just doing grants just for?
Well, there's one grant that the Asana Highway from the planning commission has been discontinued. So now the county can access the non-competitive litter grant. And then there's a competitive little litter grant that we applied for last year. And that's how we got the cargo nets. And we're going to apply for the same one this year. And so those are the two grants that, well, the board asked me to do the non-competitive and the anti-litter committee asked to do the other one. The beauty of those grants is there's no match. And that is the problem with most grants because you have a budget that's set and then you need match money. And where does that money come from unless you plan, unless it coincides with the budget planning process in the spring? But we're always looking for ways to get, maximize our leverage money.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. I know that grant writers are, are kind of, especially when they are asking for upfront like fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars. Yeah, so I know that's a problem, okay. For those of you who are online, are there any comments, Mr. Cost, first?
No, not at this time. I'll participate as we get into the rest of the agenda.
Fine, to the citizens of Northumberland that are online, we welcome you tonight. We ask for your input. And is there anyone that would like to have an input or a comment at this time? Okay, no worries, okay. And there are no public hearings scheduled for tonight. So we'll just go right into work sessions. Stuart?
Yes, sir. So Ms. Cost worked on pros and cons document that I sent you earlier. I made a small change after discussions with the district revenue. And we'll bring that up here shortly in a moment. So it can be displayed. Oh, no, what's wrong with my PDL? Anyone open? Second ago.
Stuart, you know, since the last time we talked, I believe it's the information came in on the composite index for Northumberland.
Yes, sir.
And it seems like since the last composite index was taken up until this point, North umberland is wealthy beyond me.
It has, it has to do with population, I believe, and median income and land prices are one of the main drivers. And since we have high land, waterfront land prices and we have people that build million dollar mansions on the water, it skews it to where, I mean, there's been discussion of this for many years, but it's not an accurate measure of the true wealth of a county. It's ingrained in the state system and I, you know, I don't, I don't know, other than talking to your representative, how that's going to be changed. But every time our property prices go up and somebody builds a very expensive house, it hurts the school, well, the school funding formula. It helps the state, but it hurts the county. And, you know, like Mr. O'Brien said, well, that's meaning it's sort of out of our control.
Yeah.
So if Mr. Cost would like to chime in at any time, he's welcome to discuss pros and cons. But the original premise was that a business license would provide valuable information on the status of business in Northumberland County so that we can tell, well, we've heard many comments over the years that we don't attract business and there are no businesses in the county. And there's no metric in order to back that up or to refute that. So the thought was that a business license would help us understand what we have and perhaps try to attract more businesses that we may, that would be advantageous to the county. The, one of the pros that Mr. Cost came up with, it would inform politicians of residents what businesses are in the county. It would, it would support related infrastructure investments by the county to support certain businesses or overall businesses. And of course broadband was one of those, I think, spreads out to everybody, benefits everybody.
Stuart, just to clarify, Stuart, this list isn't my list. It's sort of a culmination of the notes from the conversation we had at our last meeting. So this isn't John Cost talking. And this, this is what all of you said is best we could remember with some additional, because we did some additional conversations with Todd Thomas and so forth. So just to clarify, this, this is, this is all of us talking here.
Thank you.
This is all of what?
It's what we talked, our discussion, the whole planning commission discussion. That the list would show where there were businesses that we might be able to attract that we do not have, so a gap to fill in the business climate in the county. And it, we all know that there are some businesses that operate on a cash basis only. And so it might encourage those people to start filing the necessary paperwork with the state board of taxation and things of that nation nature to become not underground businesses. And there was discussion that brick and mortar businesses that are currently playing by the rules would, would appreciate if there was other businesses that helped shoulder the burden instead of just the brick and mortar ones. I don't recall this conversation, but adding a grocery receipt tax and, a gross receipts tax, it could be an additional source of county revenue. I know we talked about the permit fee was not really going to generate. It probably would lose money more than make money if you did a nominal fee of around thirty, thirty-five dollars or something like that.
The city of Kilmarnock, Kilmarnock has a gross receipts tax that actually started apparently with their, the business registration process. So I mean, it just, that's a pro in terms of, this is, this gives the board of supervisors another option, another way to begin collecting and enforcing such a tax should they want to do this. Again, this is going to be from, this is going to be their decision ultimately, but this, this is a pro for them in terms of giving them another option.
I find it ironic that the last entry of the pro side is by later adding a grocery receipts tax, it could be an additional source of county revenue. And the first entry of the county list, many businesses might fear this is the first step towards a local business tax. Yeah.
Precisely, exactly. That they are sort of polar opposites of the exact same issue. And that's something we're going to have, have to confront.
And why is that a good thing, other than raising some?
It gives, again, this, this list is being prepared at the request of the county board of supervisors. So if you think about it from their perspective, Patrick, it, you know, it gives them another option, whether they'd exercise it or not, who knows? But they would have to consider that downside as well, that by putting such a thing in place, it would actually hurt our business climate in the county.
Well, given how painfully aware the board of supervisors was about the tax increase caused by the new budget, I find it hard to believe that they would seriously consider a additional business tax at this time or in the near future. And I don't necessarily, I don't really want to appear silly by suggesting.
I completely agree with you. Again, this is just a list of possible pros and cons. This is not a position paper to do one thing or the other. The board of supervisors asked us for a list of pros and cons. But you're right, to me, I mean, as a, as somebody who is a taxpayer, I would be very concerned, much more concerned about the con than the pro on this one.
Well, perhaps we should say on the cons, that the cost of administration and enforcement of this business tax would vastly outweigh any revenue generated.
Well, that's the second.
That's the second bullet.
The second con. It's already written in there.
Well, the.
And by the way, the third bullet, Patrick, gets to your point also. So it's definitely got a lot of negatives to it, there's no question.
Well, I think there's also a, you know, you mentioned businesses becoming cash only. I don't want to be shocked if there weren't a lot of businesses in this county that are cash only. Your average lawn crew is cash only.
If I could address that point, you're right. But here's some, so Todd Thomas and I had a chance to speak, I know Stuart spoke with him as well. And he has a list of what he believes are the, the most known county businesses already. So Stuart has that and I think he shared that with everybody here. But part of the point he made to me in the conversation was that there are indeed businesses out there that are probably not paying taxes properly. They probably don't generate enough income to pay taxes for the most part. But he said, the reason he's more confident that more businesses are registered than we might think is that they can't get insurance as a business if they're not registered as a business. And so if you're, even if you're just mowing lawns, there's a sure, a certain insurance aspect to that, particularly if you have a, you know, a son or a brother or whoever's helping out. So there's always the insurance enforcement aspect of this as well. But nonetheless, I mean, part of the premise of this, of this effort that you all started at the meeting I missed back in May was that we don't know who they are. Todd actually argues, we, we probably know almost everybody, but not everybody. So we should probably start with that list in terms of figuring out how much of, how much of that list satisfies the concern and the desire of the planning commission here.
Well, I thought it was fairly comprehensive and certainly a best force guidance.
So John, would you? That being the case, then, what do we want to do as a commission? Now, I'm sort of stepping beyond this list here. We can certainly finish going through it. But the question is, if we in fact have a pretty comprehensive list, which was sort of the idea of why we would want to do this to begin with, what do we do with that list? Do we need a business registration or have we already got that largely taken care of now?
Mr. Parker, I can answer your question. So is this the kind of information, the economic development group could look at?
Absolutely. Yeah.
We end up recruiting an intern to analyze some of its data. And I think it would be fairly straightforward. All we're looking for is where the, where the holes are. This list can be broken down into groups of similar businesses. And then what we really have to do is identify the ones that aren't covered. Which really is economic development more than.
Right.
This, this commission.
I spoke with Karen Pika, yes, no, two days ago, I guess it was. She did not know that Todd Thomas had that list either. So she's the chairwoman of the Economic Development Commission. So she's going, she was going to reach out, she said yesterday, she's going to reach out to him and get it so that they can compare notes with the other list we sent you that she compiled from that Northern NEC organization. Stuart, I can't remember, remember the name of it off the top of my head, but it sounds like.
The Workforce Development Center.
So there's, there's two lists out there and I think she's going to go through them and figure out, okay, where's the overlap and what did we miss on either side? And then we'll have a much more comprehensive list at that point. But to your point, this is definitely a job for the Economic Development Commission now that they know such a list exists. And, and now that we know it exists, we have to figure out what our role is in all of this, in my view.
Good night, Peter. If it's a matter of searching for gaps in the business community and presumably attracting some entity or person to fill those voids, that seems to me to be something that is really right up the alley of the economic development.
Sure.
Yeah, that's what John's saying.
Sure.
That's what he just said.
I'm glad we could help.
I'm also, you know, really convinced by this generation of insurance premiums, but you know, that will do good things for the insurance committee, the insurance side, which I've been worried about.
Thanks, buddy, that's. Are, do we, do we want to talk about the cons or are we already covered that? It seemed like we kind of got ahead of ourselves, but I don't know if we want to talk about the cons and we got that covered. If you just go to the business list now?
Let me, let me throw one more thing in there, Stuart, because I think we have covered it. You know, the, the last one is the resulting data, you know, won't tell us anything. Well, we already have the data, so let's figure out what it does tell us. But let me, I want to go back to the third bullet on the con side, the, the sub-bullet there. In speaking with Todd, he pointed out that, and I was really impressed by his knowledge here, he talks to all these businesses. But the one he's really sort of most working on addressing right now is something that we actually talked about at our last meeting, and that is the temporary rental properties. And what's going on there, as you probably know, and Stuart, you can probably share more details, is that the state of Virginia already collects taxes specifically for the, the temporary rental properties. And we get our share of that. But the problem is, the way the law was written in Virginia, we, we as a county are not able to know who the taxes were collected from in our county. And so what Todd has been personally doing is calling the rental property owners that he can track down to see if they're registered and all that without knowing whether they're already paying or whether they are. So at our last meeting, we sort of got onto this point of rental properties is, is already a source of revenue for the county because people come and spend money here. But is this an area where we could be a little bit more systemic in terms of understanding who those businesses are, where they are and what they need either to expand or do the job better and, 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 you know, sort of not mess up the natural resources of the county? So Todd, and this was unprompted in our conversation, he said the biggest area he's concerned about is the temporary rental property thing. He firmly believes that there is no way he can administer what might be a business registration at this point. The cost would far exceed the, the collection. So he's really not terribly thrilled about the idea. He will do what he's told, but he doesn't think it's a great idea. But he does think that there's potential specifically around the temporary rental property side of the, of the county, of economic development area. I'll stop there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, just to elaborate on that, Airbnb cuts the county a check, but does not say that five thousand dollars came from 1235 Northumberland Highway. It just is a long sum and it doesn't attribute to any of the individual short-term rental units. And so there's no way to figure out if they're paying the correct tax or not.
How significant is that, Robert?
I mean, I talked with Todd and John, I talked with him as well. I think he said it's like twenty, thirty thousand dollars a month.
That's right, that's what he told me.
And that's in the summertime. I imagine in the winter, it's not that high, but I can talk to him about that.
That's the revenue they generate?
From the short-term rentals, yes, sir.
Who generate, I mean?
We, we have a state, we have a short-term rental registry now, the board of supervisors passed it. Of course, y'all are familiar with the R3 that we did the conditional use. But at the same time, the board said, we're going to create a registry and therefore start taxing these people occupancy tax, well, it's not occupancy tax.
Lodging.
Resident tax or whenever they're full, whenever they're full. And then they requested that tax from Airbnb. And if you're called, well, you weren't at the last meeting. The last meeting, I mentioned that in January, February, they were not forthcoming and Todd was on them and on them. And finally in March, he got a check for March. And then he's like, hold on, I didn't get February, January and February. And anyway, so he, we're getting a regular check now every month from Airbnb. And I assume the VRBOs and I assume the other.
Airbnb is a key to this particular case where they're advertising. From all of the people that are registered with them versus VRBO won't collect a dime for local taxes.
Okay. Well, there's, there's a whole lot of different ones out there.
And my.
Booking.com.
My, my point to Todd's point is that Airbnb collects the taxes that they do forward to all of the counties, but they don't do so without informing the operators of how much they collected on their behalf. It would be trivial to have operator who advertises to Airbnb by the defaulted amount Airbnb reported to them that they helped. That would break the deadline.
But that would require the owner to voluntarily give up that information. I mean, the business owner would have to offer that. Yeah, I mean, this is way out of my bailiwick, so. But there is income being generated from that. And it is, it is, it has taken a lot of time doing that. And I know Mr. Martian is in, also involved in enforcing that and going online and searching for properties and sending notices that they need to register their short-term rental. So it's taking staff time. I mean, we're getting some revenue from it now, but at the very beginning, of course, there was a lot of time spent, no revenue. But it is providing dividends now. With regards to the list, I went through the list and I found that it's not, I mean, it said June 2024, but it's not as up to date as I think we were led to believe. I found a lot of errors in it. They had alcoholic beverage control twice. One was ABC Store 238 and another was alcoholic beverage control department, alcohol permit consultants. And they both share the same phone number and the X, Y coordinate for the latitude and longitude. So there's double counting there. They have the Allen Cafe 360 Grill and that was down in Burgess and now it's been taken over by Los Portales and how many years ago? It advances, they closed that at least two years.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I Googled several of these and a lot of them.
Yeah.
What that leads you to is the integrity, there are also businesses that have been in business for a long time that are not on this list.
Right. And so Callio.
I don't know how they gathered this data.
Callio Derryfries is listed here and that's out of business. Also had some issues with the classification of the data. Cedar Plains Farm LLC is a federal government contractor. Despeake Green Farms is a federal government contractor. Toon Hall Farm is a federal government contractor. Further down the list is Sapidus Farm, S-A-P-I-D-U-S. Look them up on the internet, they're an oyster grower and they're listed as a federal government contractor. So, you know, this list is better than nothing, but it is definitely a few years out of date.
Well, Stuart, would it make, Stuart, excuse me, would it make sense? I mean, I appreciate you going through it, but would it make sense just to get, let Karen get, Karen Pika get hold of Todd's list and let's start from there and let her compare notes? Because clearly what you've got is, got is shortcomings. Hopefully Todd's is a lot more up to date, but I've not seen it. And Karen has volunteered to go look at and do the work on it.
Yeah, I was going to offer this to the Economic Development Commission because I've done a lot of the corrections, but I've not seen Todd's list and I was not aware of that. And tonight, when you mentioned it, was the first that I heard of the list, so.
Funny thing is, when, when, when he and I were speaking, he said he was very surprised nobody's ever asked him for it.
Right.
I am too.
Yeah. But I just wanted to point out that some of these are several, several, the business names are several years old and sometimes businesses have been recreate, have been rebranded and they're still operating and in other cases, they're, they're not. But it says, the, the download said it was June 2024, but that would be when the report is generated. I wouldn't say that was when the report was updated last, but.
Fair to me from looking at it, that like the Chicago voter registration list, it doesn't get deleted very often. There are a lot of corpses out there and a lot of mischaracterizations. But it's so far the best list I've seen.
Absolutely, I agree. It's better than nothing for sure. And I'm glad to know Todd has a list. I don't know why the supervisors or planning commission has never even thought about asking him for this list. Or the Economic Development Committee. I mean, not, nobody that's. Or the Economic Development Committee. I mean, not, nobody that's helping trying to keep things going for the county knew about this list. So I find that very interesting. Um, it seems to me when the Economic Development Committee, Commission gets working on this list, they have to go back and find out where did this data come from? You know, I mean, because there are more than one very successful businesses in this county that are not on this list. So is it because they don't fill out a survey that's sent out or, you know, I don't know how this data was gathered. And I think in order to analyze it, you gotta know how it was gathered.
Well, I could just, I don't know, but I could just put forth my idea. It's workforce development. So it could be businesses that reached out for employee, employers, employees and skilled people to be able to fill positions. So that, that may have been the emphasis of the list because that's what workforce development does is try to match peoples with businesses and if they don't have the skills, try to get them the skills so that they can, uh, uh, serve and, uh, and, and better themselves and better jobs.
Exactly.
And what is the, what is the purpose of listing latitude and longitude on that list as opposed to an address?
Well, there's an address as well in the middle of the column. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure. Perhaps if there was a, and the, and the, the accuracy was only a tenth of a degree. It, it, it mapping that that's not going to be very good. Uh, so I don't know. I have no idea.
If you're going to put a pin on a chart, I think you could do that. Go, go with that.
That would be one hell of a chart.
Yeah.
Uh, be a lot of pins on top of each other. But, uh, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, I mean, that's something I, I think the Economic Development Commission is on that. And I think that, uh, we can leave it in their capable hands.
And we're very willing to leave it in their hands.
All right.
Great.
Thanks, John.
Welcome.
I would also suggest that we get a copy of, um, the revenue list from, uh, from Tommy Thompson. He'll give us, he'll give us one. Uh, he may not, but I would like to see that just for background information.
You mean like a talk? I would do it.
It was Tommy Thompson.
No, I see your moment. Sorry. I understand what you're saying. However, is there any kind of privacy issue involved?
Well, that's. And, and Todd would honor that if that's the case, but, uh, I will, I will contact him. One of the things that I learned, uh, in talking with Mr. Thomas is that, um, you know, we, we talked before at the previous meeting about, uh, the lawn service companies. There it seemed to be all over the place. And, um, he, he told me that basically, and it was in the, uh, in the, uh, pros and cons. That's one of the things that I add that, uh, service businesses such as a hair cutery, a lawn mowing service, uh, pool maintenance and things of that nature, they don't get sales tax because they're not selling a good, they're selling a service. And then with Ms. Wilkins, Cory had talked last time about, uh, what about the machinery and, and, uh, tools tax? And they don't get charged that either because it, they will get caught if they're registered as a business, they will get charged business personal property. But you know, in a case with trailer, yeah, that's registered with DMV. They would, that's how Todd gets his information. But in a case of a zero-turn lawnmower that costs eight, ten thousand dollars, they're not required to be registered. So how is he to know that they have five zero-turn lawnmower, lawnmower? What I'm saying is that service businesses cannot generate a lot of tax revenues for the state. And I'm not saying that's good or bad, but that's just something that I was not aware of. But, uh, if you're selling things, then that, that's, that's taxable. But if you have a service, then it's just, uh, regular per business personal property.
But even.
Perhaps once, sorry.
Even so, you are supposed to pay an annual tax on your equipment and inventory and all the other things. And what I, one of the things that I'm concerned about is will we in fact drive some businesses underground who aren't there now? Which is, uh, I think the third entry of the con. I think that's a perfect.
It might be worthwhile at a subsequent meeting, once Karen and the Economic Development Commission have had some time to figure out what the data is that he has. It may make sense to invite Todd to one of our meetings just to have a conversation about what he knows and, you know, what he's seen other counties doing perhaps? And get his insights into what we, what we might want to do if anything, or, or what might be counterproductive to do.
I think that'd be extremely useful. About individual watermen, I know they have to register product that they sell, but is that as far as it goes? Charles, do you know the stuff you buy from these local guys? I mean, are they registered as a business?
Well, some of them are.
Are they? Do they still have that card though, that when they sell, they have to use that card and it keeps a track of it?
Well, it depends. There, there are a lot that don't.
Really?
Yeah, I would think that it's cash and carry.
Okay.
You know, for, for right money, but there are a lot that, that do have that card. They do have to fill it in and, uh, uh, with the health department and the state.
I see.
MRC, they, they, they require them to, uh, account for everything they caught, uh, bushels, pounds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, my sense is the oystermen are not, not a problem because there are so many other regulations that they have to comply with anyway, that this is not a big burden for them.
Well, but are they actually a registered business? You say some of them are, but some of them are in a skiff. You know, with a hundred crab pots, nobody even knows except the license they have for the pots, but nobody knows what they're producing. Well, the other, I mean, the real, the real consideration that I think we should be focusing on is how many businesses, particularly smaller businesses that are on the margin, are going to run from this because if they register, it opens a door to a tax blow, a tax issue very shortly after. And I'm in calendar years matters. I'm wondering if we can do more harm than good.
I, I agree with that. I, I think there's going to be a lot of, uh, uh, opinions that, you know, that's just a way of getting more taxes paid this year. It'll be twice as much next year. Especially when we're going into a year now, we're, uh, expecting a lot of tax increases. Uh, I'm not sure that'd be too popular. But, uh, I, I do think it's worth looking at to see what good can come out of this. And update that a lot of these businesses are no longer in business. Some people are no longer alive. Uh, but it, it's a good, it's good for what it is, but I'm not sure how we can benefit from it just yet.
Severely limited and probably severely inaccurate, but it's a start. I've never anything else seen before.
Um, just a quick reminder that the board of supervisors at their June meeting specifically asked us to, the planning commission to prepare a list of pros and cons. They didn't put a timeframe on that I recall Stuart, but this is sort of the start of that job. If there are things on this pro and con list that need to be changed or added, I think we need to be doing that. I don't think we're ready to present this back to them yet. I think we need to do some more work with the, uh, the existing list that, or whatever list we can find. But remember that our end game, because again, as Stuart often points out to us, we can only do what the, the board of supervisors asked us to do. And in this case, they did ask us to do something specific. So at some point we need to complete this document with whatever the outcome will look like at that point. So bear in mind what the end game is here for us. You know, it is a pro and con list. Ultimately, they're the decision maker, but what else needs to go on this pro and con list? I think that's where we need to be talking right now. What additional information do we need to complete this effort in order to make recommendations to them?
We are entering a period of time when well, businesses and even large businesses are, are really sick to death of government regulation. And I think will be a significant contributing factor to whoever wins or loses the next election. I'm concerned that, pardon me?
No, go ahead. I have to just, go ahead, go ahead.
He is not a candidate. But anyway, the, uh, I'm concerned about adding another layer of regulation. Particularly one that I did previously. And I think we ought to list that on, under the cons.
Cause in your, one of the, one of the topics that you did, um, send to us, Stuart, showed which counties had and didn't have.
Yes, sir.
Licenses. So, um, and that, that, that helped me realize a cou- a couple of things, you know, a lot of people are in the same boat. Um, uh, whether you, if you don't have it, that means you don't want to know about it. Uh, there's too much trouble to go through. So, and, and I, I agree with John, we're just supposed, we're just going to gather it. Uh, pass it on to the folks that are working on it so we won't repeat ourselves. So.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately we, we asked the board to look into this. And then as I mentioned at the last meeting, they were somewhat reluctant to, uh, give us permission to do this. Uh, eventually they, they did. Uh, so you know, they did say a list analysis and a list of pros and cons, but ultimately it's a recommendation. And you know, I, I'm not sure that, uh, they're, they're all for it or not.
Well, you know, the business of government is governing.
Yeah.
And otherwise it was just a few pennies, well, not a few pennies, a whole lot of pennies with taxes increased this year. You gotta know something, you gotta know something. If you don't know, um, you're going to be in the same boat next year and come along, March or May, they're going to say fifty percent tax increase. Everybody's going to get all stirred up. Then you're going to come back to, get it by June, you're going to pass a budget and your taxes have gone up another four, five percent. So, but I think you just need to know.
There is a, aside from the revenue, Charles, there's, aside from the revenue, there is a just another paperwork exercise for taxpayers. And unless we have some definite benefit they will receive from this exercise, I think, I think we need to make that work with the board of supervisors.
Um, Patrick, can you just clarify who you meant by they, that they will benefit? You mean the board of supervisors?
Well, taxpayers.
Okay. I'm, I'm taking notes because I'm going to refine this further. And so that's, that's, that's helpful to know that. By the way, folks, if you've got some more specific comments on this thing, get them back to Stuart so we can continue to refine it. But that was very helpful, Patrick. Thank you.
Okay. I would also suggest the supervisors always ask this question. We submit this list with the list of what other counties do with any proposal we send out. Some counties do, some counties don't. And the question we might want to raise is whether this will hurt our competitive position relative to Lancaster and Richmond. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, and maybe it's not a big factor, but I think it could be concerned.
I agree. Uh, by the way, Lancaster does not have this, but the town of Kilmarnock does. So you gotta add a dimension there, but that's definitely a point worth adding. I agree.
Yes, Warsaw does.
The towns have the businesses. So, I mean.
Warsaw has a business tax, Kilmarnock has a business tax.
I'm just saying Lancaster doesn't need that. All the businesses are in Kilmarnock. So.
Not like she said, not eighty-five, ninety percent of the businesses are in the towns.
If that's true.
So what, what other pros that are serious pros in this other than eventually generating tax revenue? What is out there that makes this something that we ought to be doing or we shouldn't have been doing a long time? But what are we missing?
Just to see if we're, I mean, everybody says that we don't attract business and that there is no business growth in the county.
And how is this going to help that? Explain that.
If, if, if we have a hundred and fifty one year and then a hundred and sixty next year, one would assume either the underground economy is going legit or we're getting new businesses in here. The number of businesses, the more businesses, the better. Okay. And, uh, you know, I would think, I would think it would be the new businesses, but it could again be businesses that are, are starting to file paperwork and things of that nature. And, you know, when we first started this, uh, you know, I didn't think it was going to be this involved, but, uh, it is involved. And, um, you know, I, I mean, I, I, I know gathering information and, uh, getting the pros and cons are, um, important, but it's really how the commission members feel going forward and, you know, it.
I, I would be supportive of it if I thought it was going to be helpful to the county and the businesses. But to attract businesses by, uh, one more piece of encouragement is, uh, by the way, we're going to tax you a little more. We're going to need a business tax if you come to this county.
Charles, uh, I'm sorry. Charles, I've been thinking about the same thing. I actually took the liberty, I had, uh, an electrician, a, a registered electrician, actually from another county, uh, doing some work on my dock. I asked them that very question. And he said, the, the one thing that would be kind of useful from his perspective, again, he's registered, he's legal and most electricians would be. But would be to know that when they go to do business, that they're not competing with a phantom business, a cash business that's able to undercut them because they're not playing by the same rules. So what his basic bottom line was, he wants to know that his competitors are playing on the same playing field and by the same set of rules as he is. But beyond that, I, I, I would agree with you. Finding the benefits to this overall is, is, is a bit of loserry. We're going to have to do some stretching.
I agree. I, I think we, you need to have a better list of pros to get people to get on board with this, to sell it.
Well, I mean, the planning commission did recommend that we do not have a business license.
Right. Yep.
Just having a discussion. It's an exercise in.
And I'm not sure getting a list is going to help us with that, but you know, if, if that's what you all like to do, that's fine as well. But as Mr. Call said, uh, Ms. Wilkins had mentioned, she, she was in business and paying these taxes for quite a long time. And then there are others that don't. So that means that, uh, they're competitive. These businesses that are not filing, that fight paperwork are competitively advantaged.
And you're right. You can either recommend or not recommend. But when I look at this week's paper and it says, um, it again mentions population increase. You got more folks coming in. And I know in summertime, and that's usually the norm, but what if they stay? Uh, you know, you, you gotta say, listen, we got more people who need to do this rather than do that. Planning that, that you got, you have to think about this because, um, you know, when you look at what we have, can, can the infrastructure that we currently have keep up with the growing population of Northumberland County? If we increase population, five hundred more people, five hundred more adults or five hundred more children, what does the county do?
Well, you know, on top of that, there's apparently a fairly significant growth in at-home internet businesses.
Sure.
And do they have to register? They have to be taxed? I don't know.
So initially, when we started talking about this, it was to gather the data about what's out there. So when people come and ask the county questions about, all right, I'm an electrician, how many competitors are there? Or I'm a plumber, how many competitors are there?
Right.
Or I'm looking to move there, how many doctors offices are? That's why we initially looked at doing this. That's why we initially looked at doing this. Well, and I don't think anybody know, knew that the list that we got existed. So, I mean, we kind of have, it's, is it all inclusive? No. But we kind of have what we were initially looking at, but it's just nobody knows about it.
Yeah, it's supposed to be refined.
Yes.
And it's going to go to the proper commission to be worked on. So I agree. I mean, so having this discussion, we learned a lot.
Yeah, so I, I don't.
Making a recommendation or not, we've learned a lot.
I mean, I, I don't know. If, if we're sticking to our initial reason for discussing this, gathering the information to get it out to people who are interested in coming here, I don't think we need a business license for that. I think we already have. We just didn't know we had it.
Exactly. I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah. Now, there may be other reasons for a business license, but for what we initially were thinking, I don't think we need it.
Right. For, for, from what we got tonight, we really don't really need it per se. Because we just need, we were trying to collect data.
Right.
And we, we seem like we got it down pretty good.
And theoretically, the first two pros can be eliminated from the list because we already have sources of that information, which was the whole reason for having this discussion and going through this exercise. Did it work out exactly as I thought? Who knew where it was going to go, but I learned a lot.
Yeah.
And I'm glad we've had this discussion.
To, um, somehow coordinate this with Thomas's office to see not only what the county list is, but what other data sources he may have.
Well, and that to me is the economic development, but I'm sure it's a curiosity for us as well, but I'm sorry. Well, yeah, I mean, incident, it would be interesting to have him maybe come to one of our meetings. Maybe we'll find out. I mean, I, I really have learned a lot just tonight.
Uh, match businesses with employers and increase.
I did not know all of this existed, so.
Does that, fill jobs that are needed? Stuart, does that duplicate the, are we in the employment commission? Don't they do the same thing?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm, this is not, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's something, but I don't think it replaces it. And, and I think it's funded by B C. I think it's funded by B C.
Okay, I see.
Stuart?
Yes, sir.
We were talking, the other meeting was talking about whether or not we should invite Todd Thomas to a, a future meeting. Not just for the purpose of whatever's on his list, but for the purpose of ascertaining what other sources of economic information he may have before we pass it over to the economic planning.
Well, I, I.
Economic development.
I think we've given the economic development commission enough information to go from there.
I agree.
Um, and they can, and they can aspire with, with, with Mr. Thomas as if they want to get more information. I think, I think that, um, to hear him say that, hey, you're the first one that asked me that, it's 2024. So I think the economic development commission can go forward now with that. Do you understand what I'm saying, John?
I do. And by the way, the man sitting in the front row there, Maurice Johnson, is from the economic development commission. He, he comes to your, our meetings like I go to theirs. So he's, he's your conduit.
See, we're, we're sitting here.
Yeah.
We know.
I don't want to interrupt, break your conversation.
No. Yeah.
But I mean, I think we've, I think, well, I mean, Mr. Cost wants to gather more data, but I, I think we're, um, at a point where we could make a recommendation, but it's up to y'all how you want to go. But like I said, this is overlapping and I don't, I don't want to go too far down this road with all we're really supposed to be talking about is business license.
Okay.
I agree.
I mean, the, the board gave us permission to do that, not to go mucking around in all the tax revenues and things of that nature.
Well, I think that with the information we gathered from Todd Thompson, and what they ought to do is after we pass it down to the, to the economic, let them work on it. And our recommendation is that, you know, uh, you got source, you probably didn't even know it existed, but now you know it exists, you go and work. So.
Also, is, is the motion in order to simply refer this matter to the economic development?
Well, we still have to get back.
We're supposed to make a recommendation to the board. That, that's what we're supposed to do and list the pros and cons.
So we recommend that the board of supervisors, that they refer the man.
No, no, we, we, we need to slow down a bit here, folks. Let's, let's not worry about motions and all that stuff. Karen's, Karen's going to work on this. We're going to, you know, wrap up our part and come to some conclusion in the not-too-distant future. There's no point making motions. Karen, Karen's on top of this, believe me. We're in good shape. We're going to get there.
So we're going to leave this topic then.
Well, do we not still have to make a recommendation to the board from the planning commission?
Yeah, but we're not.
Yes, we do, but.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see where they, see where they go.
We can table it.
Okay. Motion table? Yeah, second.
Second.
Table. Want to vote on it? Just table it.
For a robber's rules of order perspective, none of that's required. We just keep working what, like we are right now. We don't need to take any action because the board has not set a deadline for us.
I agree.
So we'll just say we'll continue to work on it.
Continue to work on it.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Good nominee. If that's the pleasure of the, uh, commission. So we're ready to go to chapter three of the conference plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I was going to just show you the changes I made from the last meeting, if that's okay with you. If you all can look up at the screen, uh, because I know we had, uh, quite a long time discussing on what changes need to be made. Uh, of course, as you, as usual, the, the red is, uh, changed, uh, track changes. And at the last meeting, Cost had a, a question about open lands and green, green space and open space and protected lands. And he, he suggested we do a definition and I, I'd, I'd rather not do definitions. So I thought the best way to do it was just to address it in the comprehensive plan. So, um, in talking about conservation easements, I've added a sentence at the end and said, lands under conservation easements are referred to as protected lands. So that, that is, uh, something I added there. And then to further, further that, uh, in the section on, um, page seven of chapter three, uh, it talks about protecting agriculture and forested land. Um, it talks about, uh, in order to protect existing farming and forest while permitting desirable development, there should be a requirement that property under place a significant portion of original parcel into open space. And so I put open parentheses, open spaces land that is not developed and has, and has any vegetative cover, e- e.g. grass, crop, shrub, shrub, or forest. So open land can be scrub land or cropland or pasture or, or, uh, or mowed lawn for that matter. Uh, and further down in these, these discussion I had with Philip Marston, the zoning administrator, so that it would, uh, parallel anything that was in the zoning ordinance. And then on, on chapter three about providing, uh, it originally said green space for residential, uh, subdivisions. Since we just defined open space up here, uh, Philip felt that it was a good idea to, to get rid of the green space and just call it open space residential subdivisions. And in this, in the zoning ordinance, and now the planning, the, the comprehensive plan is not, um, is a general plan. It does not talk the specifics. The zoning ordinance tells you exactly what you have to do, but they should work in concert and, and mirror each other's, uh, language. And so in, in, in the zoning ordinance, when we have a planned unit development or a clustering of houses, then you're required to put the land in conservation easement. If it's a regular subdivision, you're not required. You can have open space and that would look on favor, favorably, but you're not required to put it in a conservation easement. And that means later on down the road, they could say, well, we're going to developers, they will, let's make some more money and, and take the bark and put a few more houses on it. And that has happened in a couple of subdivisions. But anyway, so this, this basically said that, uh, when clustering residents and, or in planned unit developments, then the land will be protected, which is putting it into conservation easements. And hopefully this, this, uh, removes some of the ambiguity of the, the, the terms, um, a- as we go along here.
Stuart, I, I love what you've done. One, one thing you might want to correct though is the first one. When you're putting in a definition, you should start with the words, uh, that you're defining. So in the very first change you made, you have a sentence that said, this describes what we mean by, in effect, what we mean by protected land. You should reverse that sentence. So it says protected land is the following, just as you did with the open space one. Just, it's just a syntax issue. Other than that, I love what you've done.
Okay. Uh, are the commission members okay with that?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, I'm writing notes. Okay, uh, so I addressed that issue with regards to the open space and, and, and green space. Uh, let me. Um, when we were talking about, uh, public sewer systems, Mr. Cost asked if we're making any progress on that. And, uh, I'd said that we, we were not. And so the commission thought it was a good idea to put a, put a sentence in that said, it's kind of a placeholder that this is something we'd like to aspire to, but it, and I added the sentence, at this time, the population density is too sparse to support the financing for public sewer systems in Eastville and Burgess. And then period. In the future, however, this could change. So if y'all are okay with that language or like any modification, let me know. But, uh, basically saying that that's not imminent, but it's, it's something to aspire to. Uh, you all asked me to remove the reservoir in Calio because there's been no work on that. And the groundwater system seems to be, uh, adequate for now. So we, we got rid of developed, uh, plans for a sustainable water supply on Lodge Creek in Cali, the village of Calio.
You're gonna, you're gonna need to renumber that paragraph as a result of deleting that one line.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir. Um, and, uh, the last meeting was pointing out that the pharmacy is no longer in business in, in Eastville. So I struck that and then we had also talked about, um, uh, not naming, uh, brand names of, of businesses. So I struck, uh, the name of food line and just called it a grocery and, and change it from Family Dollar to just general generic dollar store. So if, if those businesses change hands and have a different name, that would still be, uh, somewhat, uh, ad, uh, accurate. In Burgess, uh, you all asked to remove the, the reservoir there. And then of course, that will need to be renumbered as well. Uh, develop plans for a sustainable water supply and includes, uh, a reservoir on Sidners Mill Creek. Uh, in, um, Reedville, um, we talked about historic area. And so I added it in historic areas, take historic preservation rules apply. And then further conversation with, uh, Doc, uh, Philip Marston, the zoning administrator, with regards to the historic district, um, the zoning ordinance said that there will be guidelines established after a, a local historic district board is established. So just added that in there because that parallels what the zoning ordinance is. And there will be no guidelines until that board is established and works on that, uh, on those guidelines. Last, uh, last meeting, we discussed, uh, where to put solar energy facilities. Um, and, uh, one thing I, before we get to the solar energy facilities, I wanted to revisit the highway corridor overlay district. Uh, Mr. Cost asked about progress on this and I told him that there was none and that, um, it was not very popular when it was put in the comprehensive plan and that VDOT has kind of taken the lead on this. And this is the, uh, infamous, uh, half million dollar deceleration lane on the main highways that, uh, many businesses have had to deal with. Um, and I don't, I, I explained the history of it. Mr. Cost thanked me for explaining the history. But I don't think we really, um, discussed what we want to do with this overlay district. If we want to leave it in or we want to take it out, uh, I'm okay with taking it out, uh, because I don't think we're going to be doing, we're going to be doing any of these additional land development controls when, uh, VDOT is, uh, it's really VDOT's purview and VDOT's responsibility. So I don't think we made a decision on whether this district to go. Uh, but if, if you all would like to strike it, I think that's, that's okay. If y'all want to keep it, that's as, as, as fine as well. Um, but whatever y'all, your pleasure is.
Stuart, historically, uh, if VDOT got the lead on something as they would in this case, does the county have a role? Do they seek our input? I mean, are there things that we would want to comment to them on, even though they, they are ultimately the decision maker?
What typically happens, and this happened in the case of one of the members of the board of supervisors, VDOT will make a requirement that you have, for example, a turnpike, which is, they love turnpikes. They're really expensive. Um, and typically we get complaints from citizens. And actually, in this case, one of the county supervisors, um, asked the board of supervisors to register their displeasure with VDOT. And that is something that anybody can do. And usually it's no big problem getting a member of the House of Delegates or a member of the state senate getting involved as well. I know Casey Stewart, that's hurt. But VDOT typically takes a position that their state agency or not go, go away about it.
But in those circumstances, that's almost always sort of a case by case situation. This isn't a public policy situation where you'd want to include it in the comprehensive plan. If, you know, if a particular business or citizen is offended by something, they've always got the right to redress with, uh, whoever their elected officials are. But that's not the role of the comprehensive plan. So if, if that's typically how these sorts of things are handled, then, then Stuart, I would suggest we do in fact make no reference to it. That we delete what's in there.
I would agree with that.
The, the reason it was in here is if the county wanted to take an additional requirements above and beyond what VDOT wants to do. And I, I don't think there's any political will, uh, to do that. And, and that's why I said if we want to take it out, I can. But it would be actually another layer on top of VDOT. But currently the way that the building and zoning works is that, um, when, and this is on, this, just, just so you know, this is only on the primary highways. And this is the, the problem of through traffic and local traffic interacting and rear end and, uh, side impact collisions and things of that nature. And so, uh, it, it does have a place in the comprehensive plan if the government wants to, wants to go down that road. And in this case, uh, they don't. So I, I, I understand that Mr. Cost was okay with taking it out and Mr. O'Brien was okay with taking it out. So I would put that to the rest of the commission and, uh, is that, is that your pleasure as well?
It's mine. I, I think it should be gone.
Mr. Valens, nonaffirmation as well.
Um. I don't really have a comment on that. I like this bit.
Okay. Williams?
Yeah.
I have no problem with it.
Okay, we will strike it. Okay, on to solar now. So we'll renumber that as well and strike it. Uh, and we still have the reservoir areas in here, uh, but I struck the, um, overlay district. Uh, and we still have the reservoir areas in here, uh, but I struck the um overlay district. And so I don't see if I missed something. Um, I basically took out the reservoir over reservoir overlay district. Um, and let's see, then modified this because there's only three sites that are mentioned. Uh, I changed, deleted four and add three. And instead of referencing the overlay district, we said that uh that as a minimum, these areas, these three sites plus an area, eight hundred twenty land or these sites, reservoirs are full, should be considered. And so it doesn't have, you know, any kind of uh enforcement to it. And just put policies for building near reservoir sites. Again, these are not enforceable, but they're guidelines. Um, so I was just going to leave those in there. If y'all want to do something different, you can let me know. Um, so this is, I just drafted this recently. I talked with the county administrator about uh what we should put in here as well as the zoning administrator. And so I started off with just a short paragraph to preface it. Northumberland County understands the clean renewable energy sources are the future of energy in the Commonwealth. Solar energy facilities are one type of renewal energy that will likely play a large role in powering the county and state into the future. However, Northumberland County is a unique county and endeavors to protect its use set, use sheds, farms and forest, ability to grow as well as local water quality. To that end, there are guidelines that Northumberland County would like solar energy facility development companies to adhere to. And they follow. Number one, solar energy facilities should be located at least one thousand feet from any village growth or support area to allow for future possible growth in the county. Number two, solar energy facilities should be located to minimize the impact on prime agricultural soils. Citing solar energy facilities on marginal soils that have low agricultural production rates would be preferred. Number three, solar energy facilities should be located to minimize the impact of forest resources and at maximum extent possible, concentrate solar energy facility development on open land. Uh, number four, solar energy facilities should leave existing vegetation on the border of the site in place if present for natural vegetative visual buffers as to oppose to clearing all vegetation and establishing new vegetative visual buffers. Following this recommendation should reduce costs to developer about the same time for preserving more robust and dense visual vegetative buffers. Um, are you all okay with that? Does that sound good to you? And I do have a document, if recall, Susan Seward with the Rural Solar Development Commission um had had a summary of changes to their comp plan. And if y'all are okay with these, we can discuss these. And then there's a couple more we can talk about if you'd like. Yes, sir.
I think we're all okay.
I'm I'm okay with what's there and I missed a lot of the solar discussion before I was on here.
Okay, well.
Has has there been any talk about maximum allowable size for these things?
There.
There are different categories of, you know.
It all depends on the transmission lines, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the transmission lines around here won't take the larger sizes. And the middle sizes, I forget how we wrote it now.
Something like what's over there on Reed Road. That's a huge, huge operation.
We we can look at that and I I I've got some information for y'all to look at. Uh, but no, because we're limited by our infrastructure. Uh, ten five, ten megawatts, the most we're going to get, that that would, five megawatts, we've had some application for those, thirteen acres or so, something like that.
So four or five would be about thirty.
Yeah. Uh, so we really haven't had that because we're self limiting because of our electrical infrastructure. Um, but if if you if if you would like, we can either go look at the Mayon solar development or we can look at the comp plan recommendations. I I would say we look at comp plan recommendations real quick. And so that that ends that chapter right there. That's the last solar energy facility. But what we want to do is to try to guide developers to build projects that we can live with. And by giving them these heads up, then hopefully they will come back with plans with the with these components to them.
Well, these are all conditional use permits, aren't they?
Yes, sir, but this is the this is the comprehensive plan. Zoning ordinance does the nuts and bolts and the comprehensive plan had the ten thousand foot view of what we want.
Yes, I understand. Don't they have to go through something that building and zoning would have to approve, for example?
Yeah, there's there's going to be a conditional use permit. This is, I mean, they're the zoning ordinance.
I think we had this conversation when we were talking about what zones they could be put in and what kind of permits they could get. And they're all conditional use permits because as I understand it, no uh use of use of as a right.
Correct. And that's that's the zoning ordinance and this is the the comprehensive plan. So.
We're we're not the same.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So um, this is the um, this is Sussex County's proposed modifications to comprehensive plan. Of course, they had a uh, they hired a consulting group to do it. Uh, yeah, but this is what they added uh to theirs. They had a total size, um, they had a total size requirement and then a maximum size requirement to a larger than two and less than fifteen hundred with no more than sixty-five percent photovoltaic uh panel coverage. That's something I wanted to ask. Is that something we want to put in there? Is that it is a percentage cover of um how how much percentage of the land is covered by panels versus how much is open? And I I, since we have these small ones, I don't think that's a big of deal, but y'all tell me.
Couldn't that be in the ordinance rather than at a point? If there are any sorts of occasions.
I agree. I think this is, I think that language is too specific for a comprehensive plan. That's that's when you start getting down into tactical details. I don't think it's necessary here.
And I I I agree with that and and I have uh been following comprehensive plans and solar facilities. And there were quite a few counties that said the maximum number of acres of solar we want in our county is three percent of the county coverage and and that was struck down. So that's not something we could put in there. And yes, that's that's what I was talking about, general versus uh specifics in the zoning ordinance. Um, but they had located outside planning areas or community hubs and that's our growth and support areas. Uh, located outside forested areas to prefer to serve forest air resources with what we put in there. Further than three miles from any village or town boundary. And that's that's pretty far distance and we have the one thousand feet. So.
That's going to raise costs of just wheeling power enormously if you have a requirement like that.
Yeah, I'm not I'm not advocating for that. I'm just saying that what ours is doing is paralleling what their recommendations, but we're not as uh strict as they are. And this is something that I wanted to bring up to y'all about uh distancing solar facilities from each other so they're not all in the same place. Further than two miles from other existing or permitted solar facility. Considering we don't have any solar facilities at this time, I'm not sure this is an issue. But I just thought I would throw that out if if you think that's something we want to say we don't want solar farm within two miles.
I don't even think that's an issue.
Okay, okay.
I I don't think it's an issue. I don't even think we want to say that at all because you know, some places they actually encourage all of them to be as close together as possible so they minimize the the eyesore around the rest of the place. So I'm not even sure that's a good policy.
That's that's fine. I I mean, I will send this information. I want to share it with you all and get your opinion.
And if we ever get an industrial park, for example, um, they're going to need a reliable source of power. And, you know, having more than one electrical provider in the case of, you know, solar power, it would probably be highly useful for all concerned. So I would let this go and where an actual issue comes up, then perhaps including the conditional use language and the permit.
That is fine. I just wanted to bring these to your uh um attention and uh that that is fine with me, but I just wanted to show you that uh we're doing sort of what they're doing, but we're fixing it to Northumberland County's particular circumstances. And uh I I'm happy with what we've got and I just wanted to make sure that y'all didn't want anything additional. Um, they, there's reference here to asking that the regional government organization to try to gather some information. And I had a request from the Economic Development Commission to try to get a map of uh power lines in the county. And I will request that from Northern Eck Electric. I can request it from Dominion, but I don't think it's going to go anywhere.
That request on the map.
Okay. Well, they've asked for it before and um, you know, it, like I said, we got four substations. None are Dominion, all are Northern Eck Electric and our power lines go down three sixty and two hundred. And that's where the solar farm's going to be.
Isn't that something that's publicly available from our Department of Energy?
The larger transmission lines are, but uh the smaller, uh, anything below the the transmission line level, I've not been able to find in an open source mapping program. But they are, I mean, you can look at the the big lines, the three three phase, three poles, high voltage ones. Uh, because they they run through the State Corporation Commission and have their own permitting process for uh uh transmission of of electricity. Um, so that's basically the document. I mean, they talk about their existing solar um and um, you know, they're in a different um category than us because they do have those transmission lines. And um they they get into the conditional use permit and, you know, I I again think that's that's too detailed information for a comprehensive plan. But that's basically what I wanted to to show uh regarding that document. Um, and uh previous discussions back when we were doing solar farms uh ordinance, there was a discussion about Richmond County and what they're doing. Uh, I'd just like to give, take this time to to show you uh what what's been going on on Mayon Road. Uh, it's kind of hard to see with the lights. Maybe turn off some of these other lights. So the things to notice here is the power line. And you can see where the vegetation has been cleared. So this is the main transmission power line. This is Route six hundred Ridge Road. This is Northumberland County. This is Richmond County. So to zoom in to time time right there, this is a substation on the transmission line. Uh, and this is Bing Maps and this is their data, uh, their imagery. And if you look, uh, it's where Mayon Road intersects Ridge Road at Moon Corner. And so there's this nice little farm field here. There's a substation there and then big power line. And let's zoom back out and you'll see forests, all these forests over here um up to mulch, a bunch of forests. So that's what it was before the solar farm. And now it's slightly different. Um, that little substation down here uh is 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 right there. And that nice little farm field is there. And then we have this clearing, this clearing, and you can see the stormwater ponds. You can see the panels being put on. This is another one in development, another in development, another in development, another in development and more development up here. Uh, these that don't have the panels installed yet, but they're getting ready. They have uh, I was looking at the colors here, think that's hydro seed. I don't know if you ever see them spray the water hydro seed uh to keep the stabilized soil near uh the reservoirs. They've already installed um solar panels here. Uh, and this is all, you know, thousand feet from our county. Uh, and it's just, it's.
Wow, all that was forested?
Yes, sir.
And they deforested?
Yeah.
There weren't any residences.
It's timber and I mean, they they do, you you can see the stream beds here and and they do. Uh, they they, a lot of it is still in forest, there's forested buffers. And basically where the flatland is, is where they built the 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 farms. But let's see, down here.
Is that in by timber company?
Some more down here that are getting ready to be developed as well. And uh, it's just massive.
It's just.
What what Richmond County has permitted.
Wow.
And, you know, that's a lot of forest and I'm sure they sold the timber. But I I recall that Richmond County allowed them to also burn the timber on site uh or the roots or whatever the case may be.
Mr. Garland just informed me that the land is owned by a timber company.
Right, right. As as is a lot of the interior parcels and some of them are owned by Archard Insurance Company as well. Um, so.
Okay, so how does this relate to us?
It it's it stays.
Is this what we want our future to look like?
This is uh.
They don't have the transmission line, do they?
This is, this is a thousand feet from our county.
This is.
Aren't we just on the other side of Ridge Road?
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, so it's very close.
They say transmission line running through there.
But that gentleman from Dominion said if they can locate a facility within less than a mile of an existing transmission line, they can transfer the power over to that. So they could go on the other side of Ridge Road and clear a thousand acres and then ship all that right across the road into where this is already. I mean, it looks like to me they could. Even though we don't have any, they could, if if they're less than a mile away.
Well, I would think that all these panels, that group, I pay them.
It's theoretically possible, but they've already said they're not paying for new transmission lines.
So they can use the ones they've already got. Somehow they've got to have a wire again, you best. Well, there's nothing, nothing wrong with them doing that.
It would it would cost the developer more to to be able to get the, you got to get easements across everybody's land and things of that nature. I'm not saying it's not possible, but you also have to factor in the amount of electricity that this solar farm is putting into that line.
Yeah.
It could be maxing out that substation and they need to build a new substation to handle any more power going in there. And if you look at the substation, they they've got a big inverter and maybe another substation here. So uh, you know, they're they're bolstering uh the uh connection here and it does go right through the site. Uh, I'm just showing you as an example of what is going on in the Northern Eck and uh that um. It's coming, it's coming.
Can you show where we're relative to Route three heading north towards Warsaw?
Route three is right here. Barnum's right there.
Because I was going up Montrose the other day and they're clearing a big site that is visible from Route three.
Okay, uh, I've not been up that way in a long time.
Just there Monday.
Andrew, whereabouts, whereabouts was it on Route three?
It was, it was before you get to the divided highway, which is in, what is that? That's not Thomas's Store, that's further on up the road. But I could see just acres and acres of clear land.
Richmond County?
Right off of Route three, yeah.
Okay.
Are the highways longer?
It's not like this, got to be in Richmond.
Were they harvesting trees?
All I could see was open land as far as you could see with trees surrounding. But I could see it from Route three.
So.
The goodest old land around.
All this was before that.
So we above Lively?
Oh, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
It's in Richmond County, past the pond.
Okay, where the pond is. I'm not sure that uh, I mean, I don't know the date of this imagery.
But this was freshly cleared. I mean, it wasn't like they just did it yesterday or day before.
Okay, well, Mayon show up on here. The only reason I wanted to show you that is that there is solar development going in. And yes, that, I mean, we do not have this transmission line going through our county. So we're not going to get that scale of development. Uh, but they do cut down trees to put in solar panels.
Yes, they did.
And that that's one, that's the main thing I wanted to show here.
Right.
And we have discussed it at at quite a few different meetings.
Uh, in the very first sentence of the words you added there, it says, it's so renewable is the future of all of this sort of thing. And
Yes, sir.
whether we agree with that or not, it's coming. So the question becomes, are we going to be a NIMBY and say, not in my backyard? Because these satellite maps, they could look bad. While at the same time, Richmond County is getting a lot more reliable power and so are we, by the way, because those lines also come up to us indirectly. While at the same time Richmond County is getting a lot more reliable power and so are we, by the way, because those lines also come up to us indirectly. So I mean, it's it's one thing to look at a satellite map and say, oh, this can't happen here. Whether you like it or not, if if we agree the future of energy in this country is dependent on renewables, then ultimately we're gonna need to get it. Now, that ain't in the in the cards for right now because we're not near a transmission line, but we should not be sitting here today, you know, sort of you know, cluck collecting that this is a bad idea, that this looks terrible, when in fact, we may, it may be unavoidable. The question that not is, how do we avoid this happening, is how do we embrace it so that it doesn't destroy our lifestyles and what we have here? Uh and I, you know, so far we've been pretty good at thinking about it that way, but we should not be thinking about this. We can't let this happen here. It is inevitable.
Well, I think we've already done the work to protect our county with the zoning ordinance. Uh like I said, I would.
I agree, I agree.
I was just pointing out that that they do cut down trees to put solar panels in. And I'm not sure that a lot of people in the lower county are aware of what's going on on the upper part of the county. But I'm not making any value judgments. It it is what it is. It's going, it's it's gonna be put in and they've got three or four more in the works. Uh and I I have referenced before and said, you know, Richmond County seems to be doing enough for the northern neck. Uh but with regards to reliable power, you know, solar is 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 very unreliable as far as uh at nighttime, you don't have power and when the cloud cover.
So why are we having this conversation?
I'm just, I because I I think it's important to talk about these things, but.
I do too.
But we can do it another day. I thought it would be interesting and apologize if it's uh gave the impression that.
I don't know anybody else, I don't know anybody else, but I think that's one of the best presentations I've seen in a long time. Uh because you can close your eyes on the right side of the road all you want, but on the other side, um you're looking at revenue and that it looks, regardless of how.
Is it, is it, what does the county gain from bringing that in? What does Richmond County get?
They they get uh payments uh hundreds of thousands of dollars uh for new rescue squad vehicles and new fire trucks and things of that nature.
Is that based on?
It's a solar negotiation agreement.
Okay.
And we have that in our ordinance. It's it's not required, but that that they must negotiate with us. Uh and and they have to offer it, so we can't require them that we won't say so much money, but we can do that. They also have revenue sharing.
I was gonna say, isn't there a revenue sharing?
There's a different way. The General Assembly allowed uh counties to to tax the amount of of solar capacity in their county each year as opposed to using a machinery and tools tax because it it would actually generate more income. But in order to make that formula work, you basically have to have solar facilities larger than a hundred acres. It's what the lady from the Rural Solar Development Commission said. So basically, that's not a case, that's the machinery and tools tax gives us more income uh than a revenue sharing tax cuz we're not gonna get those big ones.
For us, but for Richmond County, that's where they're getting.
They're they're getting.
They're getting revenue sharing out of that.
And if you were.
Yeah, so they're definitely getting, and their other parcels are.
And and if you looked at that, uh I don't, they didn't highlight it, it's Sussex Comprehensive Plan. They said minimum size one hundred acres. And that's so they don't get the smaller ones that won't get revenue share. So they're kinda saying you will be paying revenue sharing because we're not gonna let you have the smaller ones because we want that income, but anyway.
Back to Patrick's question, why are we discussing this? I mean, we've already done our work on the solar panel stuff, all the solar stuff. I think the ordinances are terrific. We've done a great job. The question is, what's gonna be in the comprehensive plan? I think that the general language you've included does not have the degree of specificity that others do, and that's a good thing in this case cuz we don't know yet what the future holds. So I think, you know, just back to Patrick's question, I think we we have what we need. We should move on.
Okay, last meeting, there was not enough enough time for me to get some comments that I think are really important. And I'd like to do that now briefly, if I may. Sure, go ahead. We go back to the beginning of this uh the introduction paragraph to chapter three.
Yes, sir, I'm on it.
You will see repeated references of preserving rural character of the county. Uh I think that language might give the wrong impression to a reader the first time reading. Um therefore, in section three A, I would add after rural character, add the language balanced against the priority of economic development and job creation.
Could you, what what page is that? Okay.
It's page one.
First page, three A.
Three A?
Three A.
Uh A, A three.
A three.
Okay. It provides a rational basis for establishing and modifying zoning and land use and development.
No, sure.
It says page one. Okay, it says page one.
Okay.
Oh, it's in the paragraph, okay.
Yeah, okay.
I was looking at number three.
Uh three C eight point one. Now, turn it down.
C three.
D A point one.
You don't have a page number, do you?
No, I've got a quarter. Come on back for a second. We get to specific page numbers, that's okay.
I mean, I I'm I can page down and not scroll.
In the general language of the introduction, there is reference to preserving the rural heritage or rural ambience or something like that of Northumberland County.
Thought we were there.
Our mission was us to screen.
Didn't we just have that on the screen?
The second sentence of the first paragraph.
What we need to do is prominently mention economic development and job creation. I don't really care how we do it, but I don't want people to get the impression that we're hostile to incoming business. So you think it should be a balance between the two?
Yes.
Would we have added in that first paragraph? Yeah. Uh on page three, second to last paragraph. Are we on page three?
Yeah, three, colon, three.
Land and area. We can't specific page preferences, so it's a simple one.
Okay, okay.
But there is also a point where the language speaks to preservation of the rural character. And then again, there's no mention of economic development or job creation. What I'm seeking to do is have a balance between the two factors.
Okay, um you wanna bring the page numbers back to the next meeting? Uh we. Okay. Yeah, that's okay. It'll be fine.
Uh we also need to look at map figure three one, future land use plan. And I think we might be wise to delete potential revenues a whole lot.
The reservoirs?
Potential reservoirs?
And modify support area to include potential economic development area.
Well, the support areas defined in 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 the comprehensive plan uh and so that's, but if that's what the planning commission would like to do, that that's fine with me to not do that.
And your reasoning for for that as well?
Aren't we showing it already as a commercial hub? I mean, isn't that one of the?
Yeah.
The commercial hubs are red, the blue is the support areas, and there should be, according to the conference plan, I can look it up, it's in here. Uh it it's supposed to be a mix of business and residences that support the growth areas. Um let me see.
And they're they're primarily, the blue blocks are primarily located around our existing uh town facilities.
Right, and the main hubs are Burgess, Heathville, and Calio, and uh.
Again, to impress upon first time readers of this document and potential commercial operations, I would rather have that labeled as an uh of the potential economic development area rather than simply a support area.
But let me just understand now, in economic, if you use the term economic development area, you're talking about sewage and water?
No, simply potential. I mean, I don't know what the business is gonna be. It might be a, you know.
So you're talking about industrial park?
Possibly, yeah.
It ain't gonna happen. I'm just sorry. Been here twenty five years.
Passing you, Ben.
And there's no been, there's been no sustainable plan to develop an industrial park. And because we waited for so many years, it's gotten more and more expensive each year. And to now say, I would love to have an industrial park. I think that is the way to go. But I do not think that in, given the concurrent economic conditions now that Northumberland has, it's a dream. And if you're going to plan for it, that's different. But we're not planning for you. What you're saying is fine, but you're really just starting over again what we said twenty five years ago. Um because those areas designated for development, it's not gonna happen unless you have some sort of infrastructure to support that idea. And we don't have the infrastructure.
Oh, can I can I read about the villages concept, uh if you don't mind, uh is it it defines support areas?
At three.
And yeah, three, three thirteen is the page. Um um villages are more intensely developed areas in the remainder of the county and each one has the potential for serving as a quote unquote town center for part of the county. Three of the villages, Calio, Heathville, and Burgess are planned to be the primary commercial hubs of the county. The other villages are designated as support areas, the surrounding residential communities and servicing some through traffic on the main transportation corridor. A quote unquote commercial hub marks the primary identity of Calio, Heathville, and Burgess, and most of the commercial and governmental services are currently found in these hubs. It's planned in continuous arrangement. Commercial hubs are intended to be zoned for general business purposes. The county has designated certain areas adjacent to commercial hubs as quote unquote support areas. And these three three principal villages that are that are located immediately beyond the commercial hubs and are mixed business and residential. In the smaller villages, these are considered residential support areas since they focus on providing services to the immediate surrounding areas and some through traffic on Route three sixty and two hundred. The support areas intended to be zoned to prevent the location of small general businesses in areas now zoned agricultural or residential general. Support areas on the water intended to prevent the location of small businesses in areas untidable waters currently zoned agriculture or residential waterfront. Beyond the support areas, the land is a mixture of farms, forests, and occasional residential development. The areas surrounding the villages have the potential for development as extensions of the villages. Residential uses are also part of the village structure, but they currently consist of mostly older and located in support areas or outside the village proper. Uh most of the new residential development county has been established outside of the villages and waterfront communities. Um so so basically, that's what the support area is, with the mix of of business and if if that's something you all like to change the terminology, uh I guess we could do that. Um but that's basically the the village concept uh for our growth area.
Again, first time reader and potential business entity. I think it is logical to direct their attention to that area, those areas on that.
They they don't stand out. They they're kind of, I mean, all I think, there's just a lot of going on in that map. Uh and uh perhaps I could uh get rid of the topographic map background. Uh just have some space back here because the green, uh the, of course, the topographic map shows white where uh open land is and green where forested land is. And if you all like, I can take the topographic map out of the background and further highlight uh the villages and the growth areas. And I could change the title here instead of Village Future Land Use, County Growth Areas.
That would make sense.
Um I'm I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get to what you what you want in in a sort of a different way. Um and I, we still have three reservoirs in in the plan, so I would, in my opinion, I would be fine getting rid of the other reservoirs, but since we mentioned the three, I think we should keep the three reservoirs in in there and you all tell me how you feel about it.
I agree that reservoirs, if we if we've mentioned them, we should keep those on the map. I also respectfully disagree that I think our definitions of commercial villages and support areas is very clear to even a first time reader. Um granted, you have to read the definitions to understand the map, but the definitions are there and I think they're very clear. Labeling the map a growth map or a map of growth areas may be a good compromise without changing everything we've written and and gone by, and and I think is very clear uh commercial support and villages. And I think it's well written and I think it's very clear. That's my opinion.
I agree with Heidi.
I think in the in the Reedville area, just looking at it, that that lighter blue, most of that covers up waterfront residential. Uh it can still be a support area because of the factories on each side of the creek and there's a couple marinas uh some restaurants there too, maybe uh there there's a way of fitting it in there, but all of that residential, I don't know what you do with that. I don't think you can develop that much more than what it is.
You wanna scroll to the end of the chapter and look at the zoomed in of Reedville? It's on page uh thirty. Uh there you can see the historic district and yeah, there there's tremendous uh potential for waterfront businesses here, uh especially on the western bank of Cockro Creek, but of course, that's owned by Ambrose, Bodahany, Omega. I'm not sure exactly who.
The fishing industry owns most of that.
Right. I always wanted to get a boat builder to to locate Reedville. I mean, I know we have Tiffany Yachts and and I love them and they they make some wonderful vessels. Uh but we have deep water here, ready accessible deep water, industrial zone land, and it's already cleared. Uh but you know, it's under control of a private company and uh but.
I I agree. It's ideal, the location, the depth of water, protected harbor.
Right.
It can be more done with it, but I'm just saying there's a lot of residential in that mixed in there.
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. Um and you know, having a mental map of the zoning map as well, you know, that's not in the comprehensive plan. But there, the majority of that, that blue area is waterfront residential. And on the left hand side, there are pockets of industrial and that's where the majority of the industrial land in our county is located. Uh, but there are people with houses in that industrial land as well. So, you know, I'm, I'm, it could be a pipe dream getting a boat builder there, uh, having a transportation, an interstate highway. Something that a manufacturer wants to have and that's something we do not have. But, um, I mean, if, if you have any suggestions on Reedville, uh, you know, we, um, definitely entertain that. Since, since you know it.
Well, I, I, I just, uh.
But the support area is a mixture of businesses and residential.
Right.
And there's marinas there, you know, as well.
I, I just think it, it appetizes as such that the, uh, the people moving to the area need to understand that that, that's a mix of residential and business.
Right, to really get a full picture, you kind of got to look at the zoning maps too. And that's, that's a whole nother, another level of analysis, uh, and uh, investigation if you're, uh, moving to a property, uh, county. I, I've never seen anybody come in and say, well, let me look how land's owned around. They probably should, how it's laying and selling around me. Um, but, uh, I mean, if, if I make those changes to the future land use plan map and then delete the, the red, uh, delete the reservoirs except for the, um, three that are mentioned, that should clean it up. And if I get rid of the topographic map in the background, that really, I think adds a lot of clutter. I mean, I kind of wanted to show it, to show how, how forested our county is. And our county is more than half forested. Uh, but I, I think it kind of, that's not the purpose of this map. This map is to show the growth area. So, uh, I will, I can work on that and, uh, have, hopefully have that at next meeting.
Okay, all right, all right. Uh, let's move on. No discussion items. What about a board supervisor?
I apologize. I did not attend it and, uh, Philip was on vacation, so I couldn't ask him, but, uh, Mr. McKinley can speak about the J C Dennis.
And the commercial peer was approved.
Pardon?
And the commercial peer was approved.
Yes. But the big, the big money item was a school budget. And that is a sort of recent compromise with the teachers, but they're having another meeting to organize the money they appropriate into specific categories. And they only funded it for six months. They'll revisit the budgetary items and presumably do a, a new six month budget as well.
Okay. Comments? Okay, um, public comments?
You know, I had one and y'all were talking about the business license.
Right.
But I think somebody, I think it was Patrick, who almost word for word what I was going to say. Bottom line is to say, um, what I didn't see in the documentation was problem statement. But verbally, uh, Mr. Garland said what the problem was. We don't, we don't know. We need to figure out how to know. That's really what the problem statement is. Um, but early on when I was here, when, when y'all decided to ask the board supervisor to laugh at the licensing. Um, I think going after the licensing was actually short then per se, you need to figure out how to know.
Right, because it seemed like nobody knew where to go.
Right.
And so the idea was, think you're in a planning commission plan, uh, because that's the only way you're going to fix some of the problems that I see coming down the road. You've got a failing infrastructure, well, not, not failing infrastructure, you've got a deteriorating infrastructure.
From my perspective, there's, there's plenty of all, of course. But they're out of control.
Now, uh, is there anybody online, uh, on social media, wherever we are? Do you have a comment? All right. Board members. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move the way to adjourn.
Second, we are adjourned. All right. Thank you, everybody.